Okay, I'd like to welcome you to this meeting of Curriculum and Evaluation, calling this meeting to order. Today is Monday, April 14th at 6:03 PM. And I'll take attendance. Mr. Claffey?
Here. Here.
Ms. Giulio?
Yeah.
And our guests, Dr. Andre, Mr. Poska is not here, and me make sure our other attendees get -- is it Brienne Godin?
Yes.
Lorraine Putnam, Jamie Ross, and Dan Alexander. So, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, thank you for having us tonight. It's our pleasure to be here. I know there's some questions talking about curriculum and our intensive needs programming. And I know that one of our board members is getting to talk to one of our South Intensive Needs teachers, so I thought I'd invite them to come and talk a little bit about curriculum at their level and what it looks like. I think it's important to kind of look at our intensive needs, and you'll see through the presentation that a lot of tools get used when it comes to developing curriculum for students with intensive needs, and it's really driven by their IEP goals. And I think that these ladies have done a nice job kind of outlining that. We are looking at a curriculum program that was introduced to us recently that would meet a bulk of our needs through K through 12 for intensive needs, and it has all different academic areas and everything. But we're just kind of vetting it right now. Our next step is we're going to invite some of our intensive needs teachers to a presentation to see the curriculum as well and kind of start vetting it through there. So, but I'll turn it over to these ladies.
Thanks.
So, if you just want to introduce yourself and the schools, that would be fantastic.
Sounds good. Hi, I'm Lauren Putnam, and I teach intensive needs, obviously, at South.
I'm Jamie Ross. I teach the medically fragile intensive needs at South.
I'm Bree Godin. I teach intensive needs at South as well.
So, basically, we've worked over the past few days on this presentation, just trying to define intensive needs and what our population of students looks like and how we're different than some other special ed programs that you may run into. Basically, to us, special education is very individualized, tailored to the specific needs of our students, the IEP team, and of course, our paras, who are very important, work diligently to support the goals that are set forth by the team of specialists with student input and input from the families. Some things that make an intensive needs class different than a general education classroom or even a less restrictive environment special ed class is that we have a smaller class size, we work with highly specialized staff, like speech-language pathologists, occupational therapists, BCBAs, that help train ourselves, our teachers, and our paras on how to work the programs that they create with their students. Tailored instruction, support for severe disabilities. And what really sets us apart is the focus on life skills, those skills that are going to help these students into their adult life. While we do have a focus on academics, we're also just working on those day-to-day activities that we need to get by. And behavioral and social support is really important. And in this program, you know, the students can receive all of those supports that they need to progress. And so, our main objective, as I touched on, is preparing the students for their lives after high school, which is really important with our transition plans. And any transition plan will look a little bit different for the needs of each student. But some really important factors that we try to focus on here at South are community exploration. We go on a lot of trips to kind of focus on using those money skills in a real-life situation. Pre-vocational activities, the students engage in a daily work skills class, they operate their own coffee cart at the school, which the money that they earn from that goes towards a lot of our community exploration, so they can see their hard work and see what they are getting for it and how they get to use it for enjoyable activities that they really like. Working on those functional academics, money skills, we're still doing reading and writing, all of those important things, just at their instructional level. Our speech and language pathologists, our OTs and our BCBAs help us with a lot of more specific speech and language instruction that they're specially trained on. And those adapted daily living skills routines that a lot of people don't realize are going on at this level, which can include brushing your hair, brushing your teeth, just things that we don't really think of as academic, but these students really need to build upon those skills to be successful and more independent. And one part about high school intensive needs that's maybe different than the lower grades is that we're working a lot with Easter Seals New Hampshire and Gateways Community Services to give students to find some extra support for them for when they age out, because these parents know that that age-out date is coming, they know that at their 22nd birthday, they're not going to have all of the supports and services they have from South, and they need to prepare for that. So, we'll have a lot of transition meetings with those agencies to make sure that there's a good plan in place.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Because there's a lot going on in that slide.
Oh, yes.
Right? So, just for the, for the board and just the general audience, like what specifically, how would you teach, like, certain skills, whether it's academic, ADL skills, like, how would you do that in your classroom with some of the materials you might be using or some objectives in a couple of those areas? Because that's a lot for one slide.
Oh, yes.
Right? And so, it's hard to capture it all, but if you could describe how that would function in your classroom or look like in the classroom or the community?
Yeah. So, with the adapted daily living skills as an example, we find out about a lot of those needs through conversations with families. Families will say, you know, "At the beginning of the day is super hard, it's super hard for us to get into routine, to get them out of the house and on the bus and to school, and looking appropriately and clean and ready for the day." And so, we'll kind of do a baseline at school of what we can see that they can do independently, what they can do with support, and what maybe steps they're really not ready for yet. And we'll work with the OT and the speech and whomever is available to kind of make specific plans and benchmarks on how they could progress in, say, brushing their teeth or brushing their hair, just something like that. And then, we'll take data, and we'll analyze the data over time, and then we can make it more challenging, or we could move on to a different skill that would benefit them.
We also, both at McCarthy, we were able to build it as the construction went along, as well as at South, we have dedicated rooms that are for activities daily living, so the kids have access to showers, toilets, mirrors, sinks to use, as well as you guys have some rooms that are dedicated just to some job skills, so they have different areas where they practice different job skills. You really undersold the coffee cart, because if you haven't been to South to see, they have, like, right next to the school store, they have carved out a little area where they sell coffee right out of the window, plus a traveling cart, so they do really well with that.
Plus, we do a lot of baking.
The baking?
We have brownies for sale tomorrow.
And I think, you know, in Lauren's room, you also, you have dishwasher, you have a full kitchen, so it's a lot of utilization there, as well as at McCarthy, when we built that area, they have access to what we know is like a fax room, but they also have a washer, dryer. So, a lot of those skills are practiced there as well throughout the day and throughout the week. So, they do, I think you guys are doing something for one of the CTE programs, right, washing, or I think it's at North, they do towel washing and stuff for some of the CTE programs to kind of, you know, make the skills real-life, as well as kids can bring in their own laundry at times, and have done laundry as well.
So, for my kiddos, it's a little bit different, because I have the medically fragile kids. So, for even with them, we have them engaging as much as possible. So, with washing laundry, if they're in a wheelchair, they can still hold on to that basket and bring it down to the washer, they can still reach to put it in, and we have them doing those things. We make sure that on a day-to-day basis, they continue to do their schedule, and we add each step to it so that they grow their independence as much as possible. For brushing hair, they have apparel with them every day, and they go through it, and they just take away more of the teaching, yeah, more of the support, and give it to the student, you know, when available.
And that, the fostering independence piece is really huge, because the transition from, you know, school to adult services is a pretty big transition, and that, as we know, staffing is a challenge at the school level, it's also that way in the adult service industry. So, they are, they've moved more to groups and, you know, larger type of situations where that used to be more of a one-on-one scenario at the adult service piece. So, really working on independence, we've had some kids. I keep inviting myself back, but maybe in the future, we'll bring Project Search, which is a community group we work a lot with through St. Joe's Hospital and the Plus Company, where kids are getting on-the-job skills and training right through Project Search, and I'll come back another night for that. But, I mean, those are things that, you know, our intensive needs at the high school level have been really great about, because that is an independent program. So, how do we work towards that independence for each kid so they can go out in the community, get some employment? And as, you know, Lauren mentioned, Easter Seals New Hampshire, we work a lot with what's called the Youth Transition Service Program, which is a job placement type of program working with kids. And Gateways is our community agency, and we hope to have students that qualify for Gateway services connected as early as we can at age three, when we get them for early intervention, but they can connect as early as birth with Gateways.
We also found that a lot of times, parents and families don't know the extent of what their children can do.
Correct.
So, when we tell them, "Wow, your kid can do laundry and fold this and do that," they're, no, they can't. And then, they come in, we're like, "No, they actually can."
It's one of the reward, it's rewarding, being able to say, "Your son independently did laundry today from putting it in the wash, into the dryer, and is now folding." And the parents think, "No way, but yes, it's happening."
And then, you get to show them, and the parents are like, "Wow, great, now you get laundry when you go home."
And it, you know, when they talk about community exploration, you know, and they're going out in the community, and obviously, you know, there are those natural times, like, right, Christmas at the mall, it's perfect, you know, it's busy, it's there, but this is giving these kids an opportunity to go out and do some Christmas shopping. They're not just going out for the fun of themselves, but they're, you know, really getting kids out. I think you guys are well-known at the Walmart on Amherst Street as well, right?
And when we go to the Walmart.
It's also finding those places that are really good and accessible, too.
But there's also a list, every student gets a list, you've got to get these things that we need for the room. And then, once we've completed that, then we can go look and browse, but we don't just go for fun. We do go for the fun, but that's not the only reason.
We do have fun.
We do have fun, but that's not why we go.
Yeah. And just to circle back, just, I mean, Dan's right, the coffee cart is, honestly, the kids love it, and they love the rewarding experiences that they get as a result, all the trips that we get to go on and the things that they get to experience together, because they are a really close-knit group. A lot of these students have been together since they were in elementary school, and they've gone through these same programs together, and it's nice. And then, you'll hear them talking to each other, and they're like, "Oh, remember a few years ago, we went to this place?" And then, it's just, because they remember, like, they don't forget it, it's really valuable to them.
A few years back, the age of, the definition of a student with special education changed at 22 versus 21. So, we now have students, the longest time they're in school is actually at the high school level, because they're there for eight years, for the most part. So, these guys get very close connections with those families, because they spend the most amount of time. Now, it used to be a tie between elementary and high school with seven years, but now it's, the high school's one out, so.
Oh, yeah. So, just as, like Dan just said, a lot of our students do stay until 22. They don't have to, but they are eligible to, and a lot of them do take advantage of that opportunity, as they should. But in our intensive needs programming, the students don't necessarily stay with the same teacher the entire time. We've had students who have gone from Jamie's class to Bree's class to my class, just based on the progress that they've made. And even if we have a student whose, say, their needs maybe don't allow them to make as much progress as they would need to get to the next class, we're all still engaging in experiences together and working as a group, and we'll switch kids for the day, and we'll send a kid over to this class for this activity.
We're always together, the three programs, the three classrooms, we're together a big majority of the day.
Yeah. And then, one class, we have a teacher, Leslie Grant, who's not here with us today, but she teaches more of the community-based intensive needs students. So, while we go on a lot of trips into the community, she takes her students into the community to do jobs, while we do a lot of our work skills and our vocational opportunities in school, because our students are still kind of honing in on those skills, while her students may go out to the hunt community or the animal shelter and are able to do some work experience there.
So, we have, next few slides are some examples of goals, and we'll look at, we'll get to a couple of elementary and the middle school goal as well, but I'll let these guys talk about. When we talk about transition, I just want to really quickly, as an aside, we're required for all students aged 14 to 22 to start planning their transition to adulthood. We have to have a formal written plan in the IEP, starting at age 16, and really outline what the student will be doing post-high school.
This is one of my goals, that my seniors, or my seniors-plus, that I call them, "Given instruction and modeling, student will identify and articulate one personal strength in one area of growth for focusing on a career, job, after high school, with support and modeling by completing a variety of formal and informal transition surveys, by identifying interests, skills, and abilities measured quarterly through the surveys, computer research, and the worksheets." I'm, this is my first year teaching, and I thought, "You know what? Let's identify some strengths." So, a lot of my academic time, we do, we talk about career pathing, what's going to happen when you age out at 22, because I have a couple of students that are, have already graduated, but are 19, 20. So, we've been working on a lot of surveys, trying to get to know their likes, their dislikes, what's something you think you'd want to do when you get out of high school. Watching them develop and talk about their strengths at this point, I feel like I've succeeded. One of my students, I was worried, he wasn't confident enough to identify a strength. Well, guess what? He's great at laundry, and that's a strength. And I was able to tell both his sister and his mother, who are highly involved in his life, you know, like, "Your son's doing laundry by himself from start to finish," and they are just amazed, they didn't know that that was something he was even capable of doing.
And he totally is.
And he totally, he really is.
He's not happy now that he has chores to do.
Like, he's done it before, but, and like, but he hasn't. So, now, more work skills are going to open up for him, now that I know that we introduced, Jamie's para is the one who introduced him to the laundry, and she's taken the time to help him start to finish, and he's towels?
Everything.
Blankets. Last folding item is blankets. I mean, and this started maybe a month ago. I just love getting to, getting to the point where they know what they're good at. It makes me feel like I did something right, that they're able to say, "Hey, this is a strength." I also have a student, I have two students that do have a seizure, seizure activity daily. He was able to come up with a challenge that he needs support, he needs that one-on-one support, and for him, that's challenging, because he wants to be as independent as possible, which he is, other than we do have to keep eyes on him. So, he can't be in the next room, but he also doesn't need someone right at his hip.
So, I just wanted to, because there's a lot in this goal, and really break down the amount of work as opposed, like, it just says, "Articulate one personal strength."
Yes.
But prior to that, and the amount of teaching that goes in there, I just want to highlight the level of, of planning that a teacher needs to do to get the student to meet this one goal, between identifying a focus area, a career area, right? So, how do you work with the student to have the student articulate, "This is an area." So, it could be research, right? It could be an assessment on what, interest survey, right? So, again, there's a lot of interaction going back and forth that this one goal actually might help in their speech and language, their reading, their math, right? That's all into this one goal. And again, it's, then there's a performance aspect of it, that they have to do it. And at the end, it's identifying, it's again, the, to see if we were successful, it's again, using surveys, skills. And so, it seems like a very, like, small IEP goal, but this is massive. So, I just wanted to spend a couple of seconds, like, drawing that out, that this is, you know, that's why they're in the high school for eight years, right? We start working on this way before 16, but this one goal, it takes a lot of instructional planning, like, how do you organize your day, how do you get those activities, how do you get the right resources? So, there might not be a formalized program, but this is a lot of work that teachers and paras have to do to support this one goal. So, I just wanted to, again, draw out how massive this is and the amount of time and effort that it takes to meet this one IEP goal.
And one of the things Bree said, talked about as well, at both of our high schools, when the students turn 18, they walk with their graduating class, and they attend graduation. So, when they come back, they really look at, kind of like, that's their post-grad work. You know, sometimes they get the term "super senior," things like that. And there is a big shift on kind of, you know, more of the, more of the life skills, more of the job skills type of thing, to really shift that towards their, their postgraduate kind of work for them. So, it's been great.
One of my other students went home and voiced that he wants to take at least a course at Nashua Community College, so now I'm on a mission to see what he needs and how to make this happen, because he does have a seizure disorder, but I'm going to figure it out, because I want the best for these guys. To you.
So, like I said, I work with the medically fragile students. So, my classroom is very different on a database basis. You honestly don't know what you're walking into, as Dan can attest. My first one, by February 2026, we will recognize, he will recognize his needs, help, recognize he needs help and seek help verbally if unable to complete a task on his own, in 75% of natural current opportunities, with minimal to moderate prompting, measured weekly via teacher-created data sheet. And the second one is, by February 2026, given instruction and faded support, student will identify 10 community signs 90% of the time, in at least three to five opportunities in the classroom, measured quarterly using teacher-created data sheets. So, I use these two goals specifically, because the students are very different, but the outcome is the same. So, we want our students to be able to ask for help and understand when they need help. And this particular student can ask for help at home, and always does, but at school, he won't, which is dangerous. And he is semi-verbal, but getting him to understand you can ask for help by tapping someone on the shoulder, or putting your hand up, or any means of communication is what we're trying to get him to understand, because we don't know, you know, what is going to progress. So, that is safety, number one. And for our safety signs, it's not just, you know, stop or enter, but it's the bathroom sign, it's the wet floor sign, it's the stair sign, you know, this particular student is in a wheelchair, so if he sees a stair sign, he needs to know that he can't go near those stairs. So, going out into the community when we do on the field trips, both of them get to work on these goals continuously, because it can be, "Oh, there's an exit sign, there's the stair sign, here's the elevator sign." They can see them not in the school setting, they can see them outside in public.
One of the specialists that's very unique is a person called Orientation and Mobility Specialist that we contract with.
She's amazing.
And Bree is, it's another Bree.
It's another Bree.
But she is, she is amazing, and she really helps kids understand their environment, kids with visual impairments. So, it is, you know, when you, you know, now we have those little bubble things, and you come to a street crossing, and you know that it's there, like, she teaches that to students, right down to, you know, some of the other students we've had at different levels, that teach them how to use their cane if they are blind or visually impaired. So, she does a lot, but it's really, you know, teaching kids just walking their hand down the wall, so they can trail the wall, and when they come to a door, they know what the distance is, so they know there's, there's an opening there, so they can be cautious and aware. And then, she's always so instrumental in the safety environment and working collaboratively with the team.
That second goal was actually created by me, Vision Specialist Amber Wagner, Bree, and our Speech Pathologist Mary Carbonow.
They like to co-treat, and they...
It's a joint.
It's amazing to watch.
It's one time when you walk into a class and you see four adults with one kid, that that's great, that's a good time, they're doing something collectively together, the kind of that, that real co-treat model, so it's great.
Yeah, so, oops, sorry, go ahead.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
This may seem really naive, but I'm not sure what, what an intensive, fragile, what was the word, yeah, and medically fragile, if people who are having daily seizures are not medically fragile, then who is? And so, can you kind of give me a sense of that?
I'm sort of the in-between Jamie and Lauren.
My students, for the most part, are non-verbal.
Okay.
They're all in wheelchairs, and their communication skills are either non-verbal or with an AAC device, it's, it's very...
So, the big distinguishing factor between South and North with our program for intensive needs is any child that has a medical complexity is part of the South programming, because we have an LPN, who is dedicated nurse in their wing, and she is there, she is...
Amazing.
She's almost as busy as the two school nurses at South, just for the three or four classrooms, because of the medical needs of the students. I know Dr. Andre, over the years, has, has reported to you about a loss of a student. Those students have been lost, have been from these ladies' classrooms, and I believe there's been four or five students that have passed in the last three years, they have worked with them. So, that, those are the medical complexities that they, they see in their programming. So, anytime there's any type of seizure disorder that adds to some of the complexities, they're at South for that support.
Thank you.
I was just going to add that, really, the last two slides around the transition and then the safety in the community goes back to our first slides around the objectives, around community exploration, pre-vogue activities, instruction and functional activities, speech and language, ADLs, leisure activities, and working with our community partners. So, you can see through simple IEP goals how it meets the overall focus of the program. So, it's, it's really, at this age at the high school, it is transitioning for independence and independent living, as opposed to which reading program are we using? That's important, but the real goal is the independence post-high school.
Yeah.
So, these are some examples, we took a first, a fourth, and an eighth grader from our programs at the elementary and middle level. I think that what we distinguish between the first and the fourth grader, one's a communication goal, very similar to kind of what these ladies talked about. Obviously, you can see that it's broken down a little bit more in two-word phrases, and then kind of the, the fourth grade behavior goal is really about, you know, kind of that self-regulation and kind of direction, because, you know, as I think Jamie mentioned, you know, the student asking for help. Some of our younger kids, they don't have that yet, and we get a lot of pinching, we get a lot of kind of scratching, because that's what they've learned as a mechanism for getting help. So, it's, we work to, you know, increase that each year and make things better. And you can see on the second goal, it's, you know, the OT and the SLP. So, a lot of the goals can be written by more, more than one discipline written in there at one time. And then, the eighth grade goal is an ELA goal, and really looking at, you know, functional site words, you know, as Dr. Andre said. I don't think that exists in CKLA, and I wouldn't come here and be an expert in it, but, you know, this is what's important to this student, and what, you know, he or she really needs to work on is those functional site words. And what, you know, he or she really needs to work on is those functional site words.
And then, I mean, we discussed this a little bit in a previous slide, but the connection to families is really very strong in our program. Like we said, they're able to be with us for eight years. We are in constant contact with these families. And these working relationships grow very strong over the years. If they do stay in Jamie's class the whole time, Jamie's been with them for eight years, you know? If they're with Bree for four and me for four, it's still a very long time.
Still very sick of us.
Yes, yes. But one thing that's really awesome is that these relationships don't have to end when the students age out. I know we've kept, we've kept in contact with a lot of families. We've had several students come back to visit. And this helps those past and present students continue to foster those relationships that they build in this program. Because they're not like a typical teenager where they go to the mall by themselves and they, you know, find someone they like and they ask for their number. It's not like that. We are helping them foster these relationships and build on these friendships. And so when they see someone that maybe aged out last year and they come back, they're all thrilled, I mean.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I mean, we go through a lot with these families. I mean, you can talk about toileting with a parent so much, I mean, you get very close. I mean, we celebrate graduations, we celebrate birthdays. And then on the other hand, I mean, we have, with our students who have passed away, I mean, we've spoken at their wakes and funerals. I mean, we become very close with them, so it's a really special program.
So I think these ladies missed a few things about themselves. So these two at the end were paras in this program for many years.
I have, I actually, there's a few students, there's a new student coming up who was my very first student when I was a para. And they said, here, go to math class with him, and I went, okay.
My very first students just aged out this year, both of them.
And Lauren graduated from college and came to work and has been here ever since. And she was a student when I was the assistant principal of Palom High School. So it was kind of a great reunion to see her. We never interacted back then because she was never in trouble, but... So, so, you know, we always talk about when we have some staff come forward about being homegrown and things. And we have some good examples of that here tonight as well. And, you know, I wish we had the North team here as well, but there's some, some great folks over there. But, you know, this is, it's unique programming and, you know, there's every opportunity to see some of the virus spaces at the high school or McCarthy, kind of how we've set up and designed them. You know, they're, they're great. We, we did, because of the, the needs of students at South, we put in a track system in the ADL room. So it's a power, it's a power lift and track system so that they can move students as needed. We built that into McCarthy and down in that bathroom as well. So we've been able to do that as the students get larger, they, they need that, those pieces. As well as the opportunities, you know, if you ever see to finance an ops when it comes through for washer, dryer or stove or somewhere, it tends to be here. If it's not one of the fax rooms, it's, it's because they're utilizing for really good skills, so.
So it's just, if there's, if I may, you know, just kind of, we are, this is a curriculum Instruction and Assessment Subcommittee meeting, right? And so I think we just have to be clear that, or the question coming back on, there's not like a CKLA curriculum, right? Or we're not buying social studies textbooks. I think it's very individualized. So when, based on student needs in front of you and each student can have different needs and need different resources. So when you're looking at meeting the IEP goals and looking for resources, what resources do you have at your disposal that you're looking at? Or what are potential needs that from a, from a board or, you know, central office that we could look at enhanced a programming? Because it is not like, again, like a set of 24 social studies books, right? So...
That's a loaded question, putting it on the spot.
I asked a question, so like, I, I put it out there. But I think that aspect, it is so individualized, but what does curriculum look like for an intensive needs high school program?
I mean, one thing that comes to mind for me and for our program is that when they're working at the coffee cart, I mean, it's great and we love it. But I find that we're really, the coffee machines that they're using and the equipment that they're using is not what they would see if they worked at a restaurant or if they worked at like a little cafe. So like thinking about how we can make it kind of mirror what they would use in the future and how we can get them to use tho, that type of equipment and not like the two half-frozen kiregs that we have behind the counter. And I mean, they're doing great using it and adjusting, but that...
But they're on the fritz.
Right.
They're both on the fritz.
And the point is of these activities is for them to be able to generalize those skills to a different setting. So just maybe finding, and even like if that means like talking to like local businesses or, you know, transition programs like Gateways and Easter Seals about what they're seeing out in the community and how we can replicate that at school to just make it a smoother transition for them. Like just some more work skills type equipment that they would run into would be really awesome.
I just had a question about that. So as they're getting closer to the age 22, or they're getting ready to go out into the work world, is there any way you can incorporate their being used to other kinds of experiences by, by doing something with the, the Culinary Arts Program? I mean, could, does that have equipment that maybe would help as your students are getting ready to leave us and go out into the real world?
So we typically cook every day or every other day. We bake for coffee love. Either muffins or brownies. There's times that we'll make grilled cheese sandwiches or...
Pancakes.
Pancakes. So they know how to use the stove, they know how to use all of the typical equipment that you would see in a kitchen, how to use a measuring cup. Sometimes you have, we have to adapt it per the student. So say for my students, it's a lot harder. So we have, I have to make sure that the handle is bigger for them to be able to hold on to. If I'm asking them to, you know, hold something to a certain level, they, I have to make a line for them to see it visually because they're not able to look at it and feel something to align themselves.
The KitchenAid mixer?
Right.
We can adapt it to it having a press button versus...
So they press a button and they get to turn the KitchenAid mixer.
Witness what they're doing.
Right. So we do have some of those items.
We have had students in the past attend some of the CTE programming.
That program, the culinary school is at, is at North. That's not to say any of our students can't partake in it. I actually have a student who, she's only a freshman, but she comes to North on Wednesdays and does work skills at the cosmetology school. But she's also participating in classwork if time allows. So it's going really well, getting to see what she's into and a chance that maybe this is her thing.
I think that's a combination with Ms. Talbot is just, she's amazing, will always think outside the box. So I think that can always, you know, if there were any kids that were any interest, for sure.
And one opportunity that we have been able to take advantage of is at South, we have the school store. And some of our more advanced students have been able to go and help out in that area, like at the end of the week, counting money, taking inventory, those skills that they could use in their future. And we also have them practice that at the coffee cart as well.
We do do, so one of my students, we discovered, loves science. So we started doing, we made a volcano a couple of months, or like a month ago, a month and a half ago. So...
Did the balloon?
We did a balloon rocket, a tornado in a jar, just certain things. So trying to find like, science that would be able to be adapted for them. I think sometimes that's difficult for us, getting things that are on their age level but are easy enough for them to do, I think is a challenge.
I agree.
So I don't know if there's a curriculum like that out there that would be...
Kind of like what you were talking about earlier.
Yeah, I mean, even that curriculum, there's, you know, I think it's going to meet, it would meet the, the needs of a lot of our students in intensive needs, but not all of our students, you know what I mean? And then from there, it would almost be looking at how would we modify what they've modified to, you know, work with some of the other students as well. So, and it's, you know, it's, it's so unique in that, you know, it's both computer-based as well as, you know, some of the consumable materials as well. So we didn't look at the science, but that's a, that's a great point, Jamie. I'd have to look to see what they offer in the realm of science. Most of it, they had the literature books and social studies, but science would be...
Science is like...
Visuals, vis, we, we're big on visuals.
And it's very, it's sensory orientated for my kids who, that's their main focus because they can't always move, but they can smell and they can hear.
Feel texture.
Texture, so sensory is huge in my classroom, so...
Mine as well.
Yes, science has become a big part of, I think, my day-to-day.
And she's sharing. She doesn't just, it's, you know, we do a lot together.
Yes, Mr. Claffey?
Thanks for all you do. And I always like to point out vacations coming, so. I'm sure you work all week, but I was just reading about this Nashua Center, which I didn't know about. And I was just wondering, who in the community or what organizations in the community help your graduates bridge the gap between, did you already talk about this? Because I'm wondering, how many org, how much support there is out there to help students, to help your graduates find employment right after graduating?
Yeah, so Gateways is our area agency, so they're the, the funding source for the state. And Nashua Center is one of the providers around. And they have different work opportunities. They have a center, I don't know, it's off, whatever, Led Street we're on, down there by the circle. And they have a big center, they have some job opportunities right in the center. They have some, I think they do a lot of different community groups and things at the center itself. Easter Seals, they have a big, large vendor fair every year for parents. Because a lot of that is really parent-driven. And they're able to go out and look and, and help support and find what vendor they'd like to work with. We've noticed a trend of a lot of our parents are becoming self-vendors now. So they're, they receive the funding from Gateways and they hire staff to, to work with their child and take them in the community and do different pieces. So the more opportunities and skills that they have when they leave, you know, helps guide the parents, you know, into, you know, some type of employment in the community.
Lauren has done, not with any of our students.
Right.
But she has done that type of care and taken them out and...
Yeah, and the more, like Dan said, the more skills that those students have, that opens them up to be able to work with more staff members. Because I know we have some students, like Jamie's students and some of ours, who have really specific needs and that really limits the pool of staff that they could pick from, which can lead to gaps in care. So it's really important to try to make sure that we're building that independence right from the first day they come to us.
Yeah, the first day.
To make them more, you know, to provide more opportunities for them post-high school.
We also work with the Voke Rehab too, don't we?
Yeah, Voke Rehab's another state agency that, that supports students in, in a different way, that's a little time-sensitive. They get about 90 days of support and service. But they open some doors for students from driver's ed to kids who are visually impaired support as well. Kids who want to take a community course, a lot of times they have that access to sometimes transportation.
They're supporting major choice, which is, will work one-on-one virtually with a student to essentially do what we do, only try to get it a step further. Like, my 19-year-old, should he do this major choice? Great, now they will help find what he can do in job opportunities he may be able to work with.
And the, the Easter Seals Program, Youth Transition Services, they've had students get placed in work opportunities. And then when they transition to adult services, they're able to maintain that work opportunities. I think we have a student, a couple of students at Market Basket, Shaws, some of the CVS, I think we're doing some work at CVS. So I think to your point, Mr. Claffey, they, they, some of these agencies that we work with during the day transition when they get to adulthood and the kids are able to maintain those jobs moving right straight in.
I have a question about young children. I know we've talked a lot about high school kids, but I know we have the preschool program. Do we have intensive need programs at the elementary schools as well? What schools, are they at all the schools or just a...
Going to challenge me on that? That's all right, we have Bama Street, we have Charlotte Ave, we have New Sarals, Sunset Heights, by Centennial. So, yeah, I think at some point we can, you know, kind of, if we want to work backwards, I mean, we can invite some, some folks to come. I think you'd see a lot of common threads as far as what they're talking about is a lot of their, it's teacher-created curriculum to drive the IEP goals that you'll see. Obviously, we try to have as much exposure to the general curriculum for students as possible, especially at the younger ages, so.
So just, at the younger ages, you'll see their IEP goals being a lot more academic or behavioral than the transitioning. So for example, I was in a couple of classrooms today in one of our schools and the students were working on identifying letters, right? Like, again, some that you might see in K as well, but working on telling time, working on letters. One student was working on colors, right? So again, that functional aspect of it. Yeah, shapes. So again, I think it's more that discreet trial. As Mr. Alexander said at the beginning, we are looking for a curriculum that also be easier for teachers to differentiate because you'll have students in second and third grade or even at the high school level who are readers and non-readers, right? And that's a lot of work on the educator to differentiate that much, especially, I mean, you know, we might have 15-year-olds who are still identifying letters. So where are those right resources? That's why I asked, and it's just hard, again, you're not buying a set of social studies books. It's just getting really independent on, or dependent on the student. And that's where sometimes technology like could help us with that differentiation. Because a teacher can put in, you know, Mario's able to do this, but not that. And then what does a resource look like? But those IEP goals are a lot more math-focused, reading-focused on, again, on some of the basics than you might see more the OT, PT, speech and language, heavy IEPs in those classrooms.
Even for us, if it's not in their goal, especially for my classroom, we work on it on a daily basis because if we don't, they'll regress and they'll lose the knowledge very quickly. So we use identifying letters almost every day and shapes and numbers. So they keep those skills for as long as possible.
Every, every kid could have a hand-washing goal in their program, but you just make it part of the program.
Right.
Why make a goal, it just becomes part of the day and routine, you know? Where at the elementary level, it really is teaching them those, those motor skills, right? I mean, that gets more complex. We don't realize, you know, what, what that takes to learn to wash your hands. And that might be something we work on at the elementary level.
Do we work on these same skills through the summer with them? Do we offer summer services for these kids?
We do, yeah. We have extended school year for all of our special education students. We have to meet by April 1st, and all the paperwork's due for any special ed teachers that are out there. It was due last week. So essentially, we build a school every year from April to June. And then starting right after the Fourth of July through the First of August, we, we run a school for our general special ed kids that need it. And it's really looking at, is it regression? Would regression occur? And we take data to determine, you know, extended breaks of time from long weekends to school vacations to, you know, if we had a lot of snow days one year, whatever, to really look, is there regressions that occur? And that's what helps drive summer school. It's not introducing new goals, it's working on the, the previous year's goals to maintain that so that you can introduce new material coming in the fall. We have typically, every extended school year, we have about 400 students pre-K through high school that attend our ESY program. And that's just the special ed program, so.
And we're very thankful because even with ESY, it takes probably a month, maybe a month and a half for them to get back into their routine and get to where they were before they left. It's very scheduled.
Yes, they really need that structure and routine. And the summer school can help bridge that gap.
Just with Julia?
So I have a question. I know, I was on the building committee, so I got to tour McCarthy many times. And I actually saw the kitchen and we saw rent. There were some changes that were made midway through the plans and, and what we needed for our students at that school. So is McCarthy providing services for all three of the middle schools then?
Yes.
At their locations?
At their locations?
Yes.
Okay, I thought that was the intent, I just wasn't sure.
Yeah, that was back when Ms. Bagley was here and started the, the project and design, that that was the original design, was to, you know, have our intensive needs programs located there, so the access to the kitchen, the ADL room, all that stuff, to build it new, so.
And we also have relationships with, with the teachers over at McCarthy, we've been doing some observing, and we, we collaborate together to best meet the need of the student coming up from the middle school.
I'm just curious, as, and two of you were PARAs for quite a while, so, do you have PARAs that usually stay with the children when they go from, say, middle school to high school, or does it vary? Or do you encourage that, or not encourage, I mean, what is, you know, because I know that as PARAs get involved with the students, they're also involved with the families, and, you know, so then the transition to the next level of education can be a whole new thing, or...
I think for PARA-wise, you pretty much stay in, well, we go where you need to be, first of all, like, if the demand is for you to go somewhere else, that's where you go. But especially for my, our area with the intensive needs, you're used to high school, and you're here, so when you're trained, you're trained to work with the high school students. The PARAs that are in elementary school and middle school are trained for those specific areas, their needs, what those students need, so most of the time, the PARAs are staying with the teacher that they're working with, if they're staying, and for a long term.
It's more like program-specific PARAs, instead of PARAs that only specifically will work with certain students.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
We, we have, we do have students who have one-on-one nurses, and those nurses travel throughout the, their student's school time if the nurse stays, just because of medical. It's very important that when they get to know the medical piece for that child, that continues through.
I'm looking for a motion.
I'm making a motion that we adjourn.
And I'll second.
Okay, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.